There we go.
All right. Hey, everyone. Welcome to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley and we are joined today, thankfully escaping a snowstorm by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone.
So Greg, you're actually coming in from somewhere different today. Where are you in the world right now?
I am in southwestern North Dakota Dickinson, to be exact. So yeah, it's there's no snowstorm here, which is great. So I'm happy to escape that.
Awesome. Yeah, it was coming straight for you guys and you had to get out of Dodge, right?
Yeah, right. We were originally going to leave on Friday night, but yeah, we had to leave early. So.
Awesome. Awesome.
Beat the 12 inches of snow in April.
This meme that you sent, actually, if you're able to pull up and share it, I think it'd be hilarious. A lot of our members are obviously in the continental United States, many of whom I've met actually live in the northern part and also in Canada. And there's this great, this great weather meme. I don't know if you could pull it up. It's hilarious. If we can share it, that'd be great. As you guys are coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. Are you covered in snow here in mid-April as well? We'd love to hear from you. Go ahead and leave your comments in the chat. To those of you who we were able to meet and hang out with at last weekend's event in Minnesota, iconic Melissa Peppings event. So great to see you. For those of you who were not able to make it, we look forward to seeing you in July at Aroma Sharing at, at convention. Oh, here it is.
There it is.
But wait, there's more. Awesome. Denver's got snow, they say. Awesome. Awesome. Really cool. So glad to see you everybody here today. We're going to be talking about attraction marketing. This is a concept that while on its face can seem really, really simple, it can elude quite easily. So I want to really break this down into something that is understandable and that really feels contextualized around you and your business. We're going to have some time for Q and A at the end. And then of course, just a little bit of housekeeping here. If you're brand new, whether brand new to Get Oiling or brand new to the Weekly Work Session, and maybe you've just heard about Get Oiling and you don't have a membership with us, we are here to help you grow your young living business. We have a complete business tool suite, or rather, the best place, the best way to put this is a business system, right? We have a complete business system to help you start, manage, run, scale your business, learn how to grow your business, and leverage the greatest tool in the world to grow a business, the internet. And we try to do our best to make using that very complicated tool something that's very simple and easy to do. So we hope to bring that into greater context for you today. If you have not started with us yet, you can start with us on a monthly basis with all the tools that you need to get growing at GetOiling.com. You can start with us for a dollar. So without further ado, let's get on to some slides. I've got prepared for you guys today. Really excited to share this with you. This is a topic that I really care about greatly because it certainly helped me and in my own context of growth in this industry, it helped, helped me to get to honestly, ultimately, the point that I'm at today. I wouldn't be here training you as someone who's seen great success in this industry and as someone who has trained thousands of distributors in this industry without knowing these things here that I'm going to teach you today. So I'm really excited about that. And there's also a great opportunity to work with us in greater depth on contextualizing this approach side by side with you that I'll talk about at the end of this call as well. So let's talk about attraction marketing. So first, getting started, I have a poll. Got a question for you guys. What's your personal favorite way to grow your network, right? Your social network? I know that Facebook is really popularly maligned these days, but it is incredibly effective still. Is it Facebook for you? Do you love using Instagram? Do you prefer local social activities, maybe going to meetups or volunteer groups or church? What's your favorite way to meet new people to bring into your circle?
Instagram, Facebook, what we're seeing here, vendor events.
Awesome.
Another vendor events from Amy.
Vendor events. That's great. If you guys haven't seen it yet, if you go to youtube.com/getoiling, we have a playlist of all of these weekly work sessions that we've done, and we actually did a really good one on vendor events, teaching you how to systematize your approach of using them so that they take less time for you to set up and run, and you actually follow up in the way that you know that you need to, but we often don't after we go through the trouble of creating those events. So definitely go check that out. Awesome. So vendor events, social media like Facebook and Instagram. Got any other? Any others that don't fall into those categories?
Uh, what do we have here? Local in person, all the above, event, internet. So yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Awesome. Cool. So the, the thing that I want you guys to, to remember today is sort of this theme. At the end of the day, the idea of attraction marketing isn't really marketing on its face. When you, because when you think about marketing, you're talking about getting an idea or a brand or a product into the hands, into the home of another person or group of people. And while that is the end goal here, the means by which we achieve that is not traditional. We got to kind of flip the psychology a little bit. So we'll definitely get into that here in just a minute. So if my slides would like to cooperate with me, there we go. Today, we're going to cover first, what is attraction marketing and why is it critical to your long-term business growth? We're going to talk about the two prongs. You know, you imagine that U-shaped magnet, right? The two-pronged approach to become magnetic in your business. We'll also talk about what you can do today to attract more interested people to you in your business, and then how to work alongside myself in a dedicated small group on developing your magnetic personal brand. We'll get to that at the end. So first, let's talk about attraction marketing. Maybe a quick show of hands. How many of you know what this is? How many of you have maybe studied attraction marketing as a concept?
Sort of just a few hands come up here.
Yeah, just, just a couple though, really. This, this is not, um, this is not the hottest topic, right? You'll be interested to know that the idea of attraction marketing was coined by a guy named Mike Dillard, gosh, going back probably 10 years ago. And in internet marketing years, that's a lifetime, right? That's like, that's like 10 lifetimes because things online change so quickly. Uh, but this guy wrote a book called Magnetic Sponsoring a very long time ago. And some of the stuff that's in there is dated in terms of the specific things that you do, but at its core, the concepts remain the same. And so what this is at its base is a marketing strategy. Again, you're looking to get your, the brand you represent into the hands and homes of a group of people, but we're going to go about it in a slightly different way than might be intuitive otherwise. So what we're doing is we're using a value-forward approach. If you've attended any of our trainings in the past, you've heard this before, putting value first. So putting value first as opposed to promoting first in order to be able to pull that targeted group of people toward you with the goal being that they reach out to you asking for more information instead of vice versa. Instead of you having to be the hunter hunting for prospects, you become the hunted expert on something relevant that people want to know more about, and they come to you for advice and for recommendations, and for you to please show me where to go to buy the things or use the things or do the things that are helping you achieve these things that I also want in my life, right? See, raise, raise a hands if that makes sense to you. Got any questions at this point? Pop them in the chat. All right, getting it. I love it. I love it. Exciting.
Lots of hands up there and curious. This is exactly what we need.
Fabulous. Yes. All right. And it's, and it's perennial. It works no matter what the promotion is. It's, it's just, it's about putting you first and putting your value first. So let's talk about who this is for. You'll note that this little section here is color-coded. My friends and I have put yellow first because yellow is really the predominant personality color of young living. And I maybe quick show of hands if you've noticed that before, if you agree with this. We are a service-focused community of people. We are big-hearted, kind, loving people. And yes, absolutely, we, there's, there's a wide representation of spectrum of colors. But at the core, I don't think I, and I've worked with many companies, corporate and in the field, training thousands of people in this industry. I've never met a higher concentration of, of yellow personalities at the core in one company. So here's who this is for, and I'm talking to you yellows first. This means when we put attraction marketing strategies into place, this means you don't have to chase people or feel pushy or salesy. People are already curious and they're ready to learn more and to be helped by you, right? This is a helping approach, which makes this very comfortable to those of us who are a little trepidatious about approaching sales opportunities. Yes, that's what these are fundamentally. These are sales opportunities. We are in a sales business. However, when we approach it from this perspective, it becomes a lot more comfortable if you're yellow because people are already warmed up and they're just ready to have that conversation so you can help them. All right? Now for you greens out there, this approach is for you because this is a simple formulaic approach that you can use step by step to scale, easily scale your efforts and your influence based on your expertise. Attraction marketing is a great way for, for our brainiac types and those who really like to have things in order to be able to share our knowledge so that people are attracted to that knowledge and can come and then ask you those questions and then get started, right? It's also for blues because who wants to build a business who's blue if the business is not fun, right? So this is a fun way to share your joy and your passion and to meet new people and grow your business without having to know everything, right? You don't have to cram your head full of all of the stuff that you're not gonna all, you're never gonna know all of it, right? Blues, and this is coming from a blue, attraction marketing works because you are a happy, vibrant person that people love to be around, and they're going to want to be around you more, the more you put out there that shows them that they can have a little bit of what you do too. You already are magnetic in a way, and this is just an easy extra step that can bring them along that journey with you. All right. And then for you reds out there, this approach is for you because this is the best way to get a line of people out the door who are already ready to learn more from you and won't waste your precious business building time, right? This is a way that you can really pre-qualify. You're not going to deal with time wasters if you set this up correctly, right? This is a way to get things done quickly, to know that you're only talking to people who are curious, who are interested, so that you know that you're spending your time in the most effective way possible. Can I get an amen from a red? All right. So let's talk about why attraction marketing is critical to your growth, to your business growth. So let's think about it this way. Obviously, you start your distributorship. You are you, just you. Obviously, you may have a support team if you are blessed to have, you know, an upline support network, right? But at the end of the day, your business first begins with you. Now, in order for you to grow to the level that you want to get to, right? Show of hands here. How many of you want the crown? There they are. Yes. Everybody here wants the crown, or I think probably all of you still seeing the hands go up. So what this is going to fundamentally mean for you is that your network has to expand exponentially, right? Like this and beyond and beyond and beyond and beyond further, right? So that's a lot of people to meet, right? That's a lot of people who need to know you and need to know who you are. So you got to expand your network exponentially. Now, we have talked about how your, um, how, how you prefer personally to, to expand your network. A lot of you did, you know, say social media, that's obviously a very ideal place to do this. But it's, you know, this is something that worked in the offline days of this business too. So either way, you have got to cement yourself to expand exponentially. And this means that you've got to meet new people, lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of new people. So first, we have to think about the impressions that we make on people when we first meet them, right? Because when we first get started in this business, we think about our friends and family, our warm market, people are already in our Facebook. Well, I'll just use Facebook as an, as an example here because it's really the easiest one. So if you think about the number of Facebook friends that you have, you know, maybe it's a handful hundred, right? If, if we're just talking about where you started out, when you decided to start growing Young Living as a business, the average person has somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 or so Facebook friends. Obviously, that expands as you grow your network. So you started working your business in a context of the connections that you already had. So these are folks that already know you. You've got influence with them for, for particular reasons with each individual person, right? You've got your relationships with those people that lend whatever degree of credibility or influence that you might have in those situations. But that's just limited to that initial bubble. In order for you to get from that one bubble of you to that expanded bubble of network that is going to allow you the ability to grow quickly and to go toward that crown quickly, you got to meet new people and you've got to make that first impression. So what's the impression of you? Your online image is your calling card. What is it telling others about you, right? Is it that you are shouting the thing that you're doing? Think about it this way. If you were at a barbecue and you went to that barbecue and you had on a Young Living hat and a Young Living pin and a Young Living shirt and, and a, you know, just Young Living everything all over you. Or actually, let's, let's put this in the, let's flip this around the opposite direction. And maybe that wasn't Young Living. It was some other company. It was some other thing. And, and someone walks up to you and they stick out their hand to shake your hand. Do you feel like that person has an agenda or like subconsciously in your mind, do you think, oh, this person wants to sell me something? Right? Does that make sense? You need to present as you, and that's the whole point behind that personal brand that we talked about in last week's Weekly Work Session. You want to put yourself out first because what your calling card, your online image is, it needs to be celebrating you and what you're about. Because people are going to have that initial first impression, even though you know how wonderful and amazing your products are and how many people that they can help. What's really important is that the message that you are sending to the people that you meet initially is that you are someone that they want in their life, right? And if they immediately see that maybe you're just someone looking to sell something to them, they're not going to be so open, are they? So that's the first thing that we want to think about, and that's why the psychology behind this is not to promote first, but to give first, to listen first, to provide value first, right? So think about it like this. Who would you want in your network at your table, right? Do you want someone who clearly seems to have an ulterior motive, right? Or do you want someone who's focused on growth, on positivity, on sharing good things, on elevating others and elevating themselves? I think that's a really easy question to answer, right? And so then what you would need to do, if you want to achieve more of the kind of results that, that attraction marketing can give you, is that you need to focus on putting your outward image there as, as, as that positive person, as the best version of yourself. Because you want to make it easier for people to get to know you and want to interact with you more, right? In order to be interesting, you need to be interested in others, you need to share your best life, and we'll get into some more of those things, uh, things that you can do to put this stuff to work here. Just a second. I don't want to get ahead of myself too far. So there's a two-pronged magnetic, magnetic approach, I like to call it, that you'll need to follow if you want to implement attraction marketing principles for your business. And first is that you're going to want to live your best life and share it on social media. So in the context of Young Living, this doesn't mean don't talk about anything that it does for you because obviously it does transformative things for you, but focus on the results. Focus on gratitude, right? I am so grateful that I finally found something that helps me with X, Y, Z. Right? And then get people to say, oh, well, what is it? Please tell me more, right? That's what you want. You want people to say, oh my God, it'd be amazing if I had that result too. You know how to do that? Can you please show me? That's what we're talking about here. That's, that's magnetic. That's attraction marketing. So instead of saying, here is Frankincense oil. It's on sale. Say, I found an oil that serves me in my spiritual life and helps me focus when I feel strung out and brings me peace. I'm so grateful. And then people will say, well, come on, which one is it, right? And now you have that upper hand and now you can say, let me show you. I'd love to share this with you. It changes the posture of that interaction from you being in a needy place of needing to sell a thing to someone else, to someone else coming to you needing something of you. Does that make sense? That's what we're looking for here. We're posturing and positioning you as the authority, as the expert that others are coming to. Because when you flip that script, when people come to you instead, they are far more ready to make a decision to purchase or to make a decision to change their life than they are if you come to them showing a place of need, right? All right. So here's some of the things that you'll want to share on social media, things that are positive. You want to exude leadership. You want to share lifestyle, right? So if you're going on vacation, those are the kind of pictures that you want to put out there. You want to inspire people. You, you want to stay on message with, again, thinking back to who do you want in your network? Right? You want to be around others that elevate you, right? And you want to elevate others in kind. So share the kinds of things that are in line with that, things that motivate, things that inspire. And then above all, just keep the theme things positive because on social media, it's really, really easy to fall into those dark holes where a lot of folks are these days. And you want to be that shining light there, right? You want to be that breath of fresh air. Then the second prong, right? So your first, first is your best life. This is attracting with images. This is attracting with, with feeling, okay? And second prong, which, you know, will satisfy you greens out there, is that you're going to share helpful, useful information that's meant to help those that you would want to surround yourself with and of course, fill your team with, right? So this is where you start getting into resources and advice and how-tos and results-oriented content. This can be simple posts, but obviously you want to expand, and especially if you're using the Get Oiling system, you get to use things like your blog and campaigns and classes and things like that where you can actually teach people how to achieve results, where you can show people how to get a result. Show people how to get a thing done. Remember that being value first, not promotion first. So not show them how to buy your oils, right? That is ultimately what you're going to show them how to do, but we put a step in front of that that really colors the way that the rest of the interaction works. So we're going to show you how to get a result that you want. And then of course, in order to get that result, you got to buy the oils, right? All right. So we want to also talk about you becoming more magnetic. So these are some steps that you can take right now. First, you want to make sure on your social media profiles, use your photo, right? It's not dog book, baby book. It's Facebook. So use your face. Um, you know, use a nice clear photo of yourself. And in your cover photos online, um, where they're applicable, of course, you want to make sure that they are nice as well. Maybe they include you or there's something positive or inspirational. Your, your hub online, your calling card, your really what is essentially your business card online needs to be about you. You also want to make sure that you drastically limit public facing promotions. Because again, let's just say that you're going to go out and get social because we've got to do this, right? We've got to get into online groups. We've got to get into offline groups that should certainly have an online element because they kind of all do these days, right? You want to limit your promotions that are public facing because of that first impression. When people, when, if you say you send a friend request to somebody that's inside of a group on Facebook that you're a part of, that's not promotionally centric, maybe you're, you're in a group, a support group for a, uh, you know, for a digestive disorder or issue, right? I mean, there's tons of folks who are in like celiac support groups and things like that online. I know a lot of us suffer with, with those types of issues and we go and we find community for support. So when we interact in those groups and people hover over and they look at our profile, are they looking at us who might be, you know, just out there farming, fishing for someone, for someone to, you know, to sell something to? Or do you look like someone that they would just love to have in their network? That's why that whole, you know, make sure your profile is you and you're not promoting is important because people are going to look at you and they're going to make a snap judgment. We all do this. And we want to be our best selves that is most attractive to the type of person that we want to attract into our business, right? So limit the public facing promotions. Now, there are plenty of places that you can put your promotions. Just don't put them on your Facebook wall. Use it, uh, use them in your groups, right? Use them in, um, in your email list, right? In your newsletters and things like that. But, but really try to keep your public profile as something that's really just you and you elevated so that you can attract more people, so that people can be more curious, right? Because you're not going to get curiosity if you've got everything out there. All right. Now, obviously you're going to do that. And then you also want to make sure, and this is a tricky thing to do. This is a mindset practice. Uh, you want to avoid falling into the negative topics. This is news and politics, et cetera. Now, you can have thought-provoking and thoughtful conversations. Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying be vanilla or hide your views. To the contrary, I think it's actually really important that you are strong in your views. Just make sure that you are conducting yourself with leadership, inspiration, aspiration, and that the, the things that you're choosing to engage on are things that are uplifting generally or thought-provoking in a positive way. All right. I think turning off the news just period is a really good idea. If you want to focus on the business, you're going to attract more people who have more of the qualities that you want in your business anyway, if that's the place that you're coming from. All right. So you want to also be aspirational and inspirational. Be that breath of fresh air. There's all this negative noise out there. You want to be that light in the dark. You want to be the one that gives people hope. And you just being who you are and sharing your life, being positive and helping people is enough to do that. You don't even really have to overthink it. Just be authentic and, and truly be out to help people. And then make sure that you check yourself on the regular. Would me as RCD, would I in the crown do or say or share this piece of information? Always ask if your higher self would conduct themselves in this way before you go out and make something that is pretty permanent on your reputation and, and especially on the, um, on the perception of others around you. And then this is a really cool thing that you can do. You can follow thought leaders, right? So this is not just folks who are in Young Living. I highly recommend that you find folks who are big in the personal development space. I am, I am a big, big fan of folks like, um, and now his name is just flying out of my head, but Brian Tracy is a good one. Jim Rohn, you guys have probably heard about. Mary Ann Williamson is incredible. There's lots of really cool people. There's also in the business world, Marie Forleo is amazing. We'll come up with, with lots of, John Maxwell, that was the first one, and my favorite one that I couldn't remember there just a second ago. John Maxwell is one of the best authors on leadership, um, and he is still around, still writing. And he has a Facebook page where you can follow him and you can also interact with other people who are of that similar mindset. And wouldn't you want people who are positive and open-minded in your social circle? And those people get curious about what you do so that you can help them, so that maybe you can work together and grow a business, right? Don't you think that might be a great place for you to look for folks who would be great additions to your circle? And then of course, you want to unfollow. Now, this doesn't mean unfriend. You know, you, you love your family, you love your friends, but it doesn't have to, they don't have to be what's in your feed, right? So again, you are the, what is it? You're, you're the sum, or you're the average of the five people you spend the most time with? I think Jim Rohn said that. Uh, you need to make sure that what you're feeding your brain is what you want in it because it's going to stick. So unfollow the negative and increase the positive. And this will really help you to do a lot more of this kind of thing naturally. You'll have more good content to share, to comment on, and it will permeate. It'll start to permeate the way that you communicate. All right. So let's talk about being magnetic in action. And these are steps that you guys can take right now. All right. So the first thing that you're going to want to do, obviously, have, have a quick look over of your social profiles, um, you know, take or, or hide some of those more promotional aspects, really elevate yourself and your message, and join groups and participate on pages where people of that higher-like mind hang out. Send friend requests to those interesting people. Again, keeping in mind that you're, you know, sending a friend request to someone is like offering a handshake. Are you plastered with stuff all over you that's going to make them think that you have an ulterior motive? You need to genuinely be out there in the interest of expanding your network because this person that you meet, that you send a friend request to, they may actually not be somebody that's ever interested in joining your, your organization as, as a builder or being a customer, but they met, but they meet 50 people that they could introduce you to that would, you know, that, that your future diamond is, is in that rough, right? You never know. Your interest needs to be in expanding and meeting more people and having great relationships. You never know, your interest needs to be in expanding and meeting more people and having great relationships so that you can get more referrals, grow your influence and meet more and more and more people who might then become your customers, your members and your builders. All right, so send those friend requests, open those conversations with people by asking them questions, right? So be genuinely interested in the people that you connect with. Ask them what they do, ask them if they love what they do. What are they working on right now that's giving them joy? And if they start to share with you that there are things that are going on that they don't love so much, see how you can help, come from that position of help. And then when you offer that, they're going to be that much more interested. And then once you get them talking about themselves, they are automatically going to want to ask you those same questions. And there you have your opportunity to let them know that you helped transform lives by helping people change out the everyday products that are in their homes and set them on the course for financial freedom. If that doesn't sound interesting to them, they know somebody who that sounds interesting to, right? So every single one of these connections that you make has the potential to become that diamond in the rough that you're looking for. All right, for, and like I just mentioned, you want to focus on helping and serving people first. We're not looking to just make that quick connection so that we could splash a link up there and let them know that we've got some, you know, some particular oils 50% off or something like that. We don't want to do that. Uh, we want to see how we can help others because that increases, um, goodwill in the world. And of course, when we do that, it comes back to us. And of course, it gets influence, uh, the ball of influence rolling so that more people are coming to you, uh, wanting to know more about how you can help them. All right, and then you want to make sure that you set an intention for yourself to make hundreds of new friends, thousands of new friends even. Now, before this starts to feel too daunting for you, remember this. If you have systems in place, so say you have a newsletter that you have put together, but you send out once a month through Get Oiling, or if you have a landing page by which people can opt in, get onto your email list and receive a class that you've put into campaign form, right? You've got an opportunity to meet, invite into your social circle online, thousands of people and have them discover that link there, yourname.com that leads to your funnel on Get Oiling, uh, where people can get more information and learn more without you having to repeat that process every single time. So before you go, oh my God, thousands of people, I can't handle it. You actually want that, and if you've got the system to back you up, which you do have with Get Oiling, uh, then you just go meet tens of thousands of people, right? And, uh, and, and then you'll, you'll find those diamonds in the rough. All right, so at the core of this strategy, you guys, is your personal brand. Now we talked about this last week. Your personal brand is as powerful as Nike or Apple or Oprah, right? Your personal brand is the story of you that influences the way people perceive you. And that is just, it's at the core. It's absolutely critical to how you go about attracting more and more and more and more of the right people to your business, right? Into your life and into your business. Now uncovering, figuring that out and then mapping out the steps to, to define and then grow that crown worthy brand is really, it's, it's not easy to do on your own. As, as one person, it's really hard to figure out. And, and I can tell you this myself, having been through those struggles myself personally. And I have taught on this topic, you guys, since 2013. All right, so we're going back, uh, what, six years now? This has been through thousands of distributors in this industry. It's really difficult to do this on your own. So we have an opportunity that we've put together for you guys to work alongside myself, with Greg and a small dedicated group of others in an intimate group to do just that. And we've called it Become An Icon, a Personal Branding Intensive. And at the end of the day, you are your biggest asset for your business. And in a four week live small group session, you'll work with us to build your iconic brand. We'll dig deep to uncover your big vision and transform the way that you communicate your value. You'll uncover the real value of your time and how to spend it and chart your roadmap to Royal and beyond. And we are really excited to offer this to you. This is something that would normally be offered on its own for $900 and beyond. It's actually complimentary with your annual Get Oiling membership at Basic and Beyond. If you upgrade, if you're already with us, you upgrade to annual, you'll get access to this. If you're brand new, you get started with us at annual, at basic and, and beyond, you can get access to this as well. Now, if you are already with us and you have questions about how you can, um, you can take advantage of this, maybe you're annual and you're midway through or something like that, don't hesitate to reach out and ask, we want to include as many of you as possible in this. Uh, there is going to be limited space for this just so that we can offer the, the, the one-on-one attention that it does need, um, you know, in order for, for you to get the benefit. So if this is something that you would see value in having for yourself, developing a personal brand that would allow you to become more influential and to attract more people who are ready to learn from you into your business. We are excited to have you with us, so all you have to do is go over to getoiling.com forward slash icon to learn more. And of course, to select your plan and get started. And of course, if you are already with us, you will want to pop us an email over to info@getoiling.com and let us know, um, you know, what your membership is, right? Uh, I think Greg, you can pop in with this, like how, how we can help you out if you are already, uh, may say like a monthly member.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, send me an email. I mean, it kind of depends on what plan you've got and, and where you're at. But if you do want to switch to annual, uh, that's something I'll take care of on this end. Just, uh, let me know that you want in there. We're getting a couple of questions over here.
All right.
Yeah, so Maria asked, are you talking about paying annually instead of monthly? Yeah, so basically it's, you know, paying for the year upfront versus a month to month. You do get a month free with that too, so it is actually a better deal paying, uh, you know, upfront for the year. And then plus it, of course, it includes this awesome intensive as well. And Amy asks, when does this start? Have we, I think May was what we were talking about, right?
Yes, yes, so that is going to be, let me pull up my calendar here. Um, and you will have access to all the recordings and, and you'll be able to retain access to those recordings as well. I know it's, um, in this type of setting, it's, it's often quite challenging to get everybody in one place at one time, especially because we are a global community here, uh, with Get Oiling. That will be May 3rd through the 24th, on Thursdays, meeting on Thursday evenings. And that would be evenings, evenings, 9:00 PM US time, Eastern US time. All right, do we have any other questions, um, about, if you have any questions about Icon? Uh, we'll go ahead and let's, let's just go ahead and pop over to Q and A. I know plenty of you probably came here with other questions relating to using Get Oiling to grow your business or, uh, maybe about, um, attraction marketing. Excited to hear any of those that you might have.
We do have one question from Ashley here about the intensive. And she says, so will this be, or will, so will this like a brand me type thing? Like if you help us figure out the words for our brand and what we could post and focus on?
Yeah, so that's, that's actually a, a part of this for sure. I will not be, you know, like writing it for you, but I will definitely be giving you feedback on how to get it done correctly. So it's, it's a process, uh, a journey, if you will, uh, where we really gain clarity first on, on, on what it is that makes you special, right? Like what is your value and how is that tied to your big vision? And when I say big vision, I mean above and beyond royal crown diamond. It's what life looks like when you have the crown. It's, it's what you can do for others. And, and then having that language guide the way that you communicate. So that when you talk, when you post, when you share, you're casting vision, right? And when you're casting vision, people want to follow people who are going somewhere. And so we're going to really define what that looks like, uh, for you together. Um, and you'll definitely have that opportunity for feedback, both in a dedicated small group setting where we will partner up and we will review, uh, and look over each other's information, uh, and, and the stuff that we put together so that you, you know, at the end of the day, you're walking away with the, the best, uh, the best approach possible for you. But that feedback is there for sure, I'll be there to help.
Cool, Amy asks, can I offer this to new team members in future months? I'm assuming the intensive.
Oh, you mean, um, so you mean like the recordings perhaps? I think that, okay, so when we are, when, when this has wrapped up, uh, it will still exist as, as a recording. And, oh, and I should also add for those of you who have worked with us already in a coaching capacity, um, you are included with this already, right? So with the, the coaching packages that we have done, like the, you know, if you've done a personal branding intensive already, you get to be a part of this live group as well. So if you're, if you, if you're wondering, that's the case. Um, but along those lines, Amy, um, we will have, this will be recorded and inside of, of a group, a course, if you will. Um, and so there will be opportunity to access it. Uh, but it would be, um, you know, it would be through our channels. So, so maybe it's something that would be offered, um, you know, as a bonus or we're not quite sure, you know, where, where that goes from there. But what you could do, if you've got these team members now, is you could invite them to get started. And, uh, and you can go through this together.
Yeah, cause part of it's going to include, uh, you know, setting up your Good Oiling system with your own brand. So, uh, you know, having each of the, your team members having their own account would be super helpful for them too.
Right, and, and yeah, that's, thank you for bringing that up Greg. This, this is in the context of, of using Get Oiling, right? Because you're, you're getting started with us on an annual commitment. And so fundamentally, all of the things that we're doing, they're going to tie into aspects of how you use the system. So when we talk about how you communicate your story and cast your vision, you're going to be plugging that into the about me section. We're going to talk about how you might be able to put a content plan together that is in line with your vision so that you know what to write about, right? Or you know what to make a video about and so on. Excuse me. So this ties into your marketing strategy and your business system with Get Oiling, 100%. All right. I'd like to have each of my team members participate and work on developing, it's awesome. Great, so we, we will obviously, we'll, we'll be in touch about how that shakes out beyond the month of May. Um, we can, and, and this is something I believe that we'll, we'll run again, right? So we'll, we'll go through this process and maybe we do this again after, uh, after convention. We've definitely talked about that, so we could definitely run this promo again for sure. Um, I think that for the, the scope of, of what we offer as a complete business system, because a lot of people, they look at us in the category of like, oh, you're like that other thing that sends emails or oh, you're like that other thing that has like, you know, the pretty website themes. Okay, yes, we have those things, but we have everything else too. Like you literally don't need anything other than moving your feet or your mouth and your Young Living back office coupled with Get Oiling, that's it, right? All of your, you know, outreach, your text, your email, uh, teaching you how to grow a business, teaching you how to build habits with the Digital Upland Coach, it's all there for you. So yeah, this is, uh, the, the one thing that's usually missing is, okay, well, how do I put this all in the context for me? And that's really why this, uh, this personal branding intensive, this Become An Icon intensive came about. Uh, because we need to figure out what our voice is. So many of us, we come and we love, like we fall in love with the company and the products, as you should, and your people will too. But you've got to inspire them to something greater before they're even open to looking at what Young Living is. And that's what we figure out in this intensive. Let's see, Ashley says, does attraction marketing mean you never ask for the sale online? Hmm, so that's, okay, so online meaning in the, in the DMs, um, maybe you do. My personal recommendation is always to ask for a sale one-on-one. Um, I would never, I would never feign to say that there is any kind of automation in signing people up and duplicating signups, uh, on an automated basis in this industry. It's just not how it works. If you wanted to automate the sale of necklaces from a Shopify site, you could do that. But you don't automate, uh, enrollments and duplication in a network marketing company. So asking for the sale is a one-on-one thing. Um, now that could be if you're on Skype, right? Or if you're on Zoom or if you are on the phone or in person, all of those are acceptable ways. Um, so I, I don't think that it's necessarily just an attraction marketing point. I think it's just a point in general that you don't ask for the sale online. Because if you ask for the sale when you don't have someone's captive attention and their commitment to respond to you right away, you're just speaking into the ether, right? People can vanish from the DMs and just, you know, they can ghost you. If someone's right in front of you, they can't ghost you. If someone's on the other side of the phone, they can't ghost you, right? Like that's, it's, it's, it's just, it's a smart way to do things. Um, so when you're asking for the sale, now if you're asking, you know, what they use or, you know, what their habits are, what their goals are, those are things you ask online. But your goal is always to get people into a one-on-one interaction with you. You're looking to, you know, use bulk action and getting eyeballs and getting interest and getting outreach. But then you're getting one-on-one, on one-on-one, on one-on-one with people who do reach out, who do come through those funnels and so on. I hope that makes sense, let me know if you have any clarifying questions to ask. You've had all that happen, yeah, yeah. That's, that's, that's the funny thing, man, like when, in, in this business, especially if we're very yellow personalities and, and, and we're, um, and, and we don't want to feel like we're pushing anyone, right? Um, we let others make the decision. But the thing is, is you, you have to, you have to demand respect of your time and that's not a red quality. It's a self-respect quality and everyone should have that. And people should respect your business and your time in the same way that they would respect their doctors or their attorneys. Because you have vision, you are out to help people in the same way that any other professional is. And you actually have the, you, you got the benefit of being able to get paid way more than those other guys. You didn't have to go to school 10 years for it. So, uh, and for those of you who did, you, you really understand how that feels. Yeah, so, um, so you're saying make a sale online through a DM isn't wise? What if you mainly want to grow online? So, um, yeah, so tell you what, I mean, Ashley, if, if you are successfully making lots of sales, like just through direct messages and people are clicking the link and they're going off to purchase and you're, you know, you're ranking advancing as happily and, and quickly as you would like to be, then don't, you know, don't fix what's not broken. Um, but what I know to be true about this business is that duplication is something that starts with how you get started, right? Um, and you need to make sure that you're setting your people up for the best results to duplicate themselves. And you can automate and you can put online so many aspects of your business. But the one most important thing that should not be put online uh, is, is that, that final bit of let's connect, tell me what your goals are. Okay, here's how we're going to get started. And then you're signing someone up. That's the one part of the network marketing business process that should not be an online thing. Um, because you're removing the human connection from it. You're removing the human accountability from it and you can reach tons of people, right? You can blog and you can get thousands and tens of thousands, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of followers. Sure, you could drop a link out there and maybe a handful will buy something from you. But if you could provide a way for people who are interested right now to reach out to you and say, I'm ready to change my life and I believe you can help me do it. Do you think that the right response is to drop a link in their inbox and say, okay, here, good luck? Or is it to say, okay, let's talk about your goals, let's talk about how I can help you. So we're going to get started and I'm going to walk you through it so that you feel confident about the whole process. I'm also going to make sure that you select essential rewards, right? Because they're not going to do that automatically if they see it's an option, right? You're going to get a lot more people onto essential rewards this way as well. So yes, you want to do things online and that's the right thing to do. That doesn't mean that you don't have the human one-to-one contact. That's a really critical part. Uh, this is a person-to-person business, we can scale it, but we can't replace the person.
Yeah, so Debbie has a question over here in Q and A. Do you suggest going back in Facebook time and deleting posts that our RCD self wouldn't post?
Yes, to a degree. So when you click on your photos, uh, and, you know, so this is something, hmm, how would I put this? So if your photos aren't all completely visible to people who aren't, uh, friends with you on Facebook, then it shouldn't be as much of a problem. This has a lot more to do with that, that first impression, right? So when people aren't friends with you and they, you know, they hover over and they, they Right, so when people aren't friends with you and they, you know, they hover over and they they look at what you're about before they select your, you know, they uh, choose to accept your friend request or something. If they can't see promotional stuff then, then it's okay. I would go back and edit, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too um, I wouldn't be too worried about going too far back. Although, I mean, I I do find it beneficial to to not have very much about the company specifically. Because, I mean, you've you've probably experienced this before. If you have ever shown uh, you know, or if you've ever invited someone to a party, right? To to an experienced party at your house or to a presentation that you're going to give. And maybe they don't say this out loud to you, or maybe this is the reason why they don't show up. Is is that they have a preconceived notion about the industry or about Young Living. Because of something someone else said or did that had nothing to do with you, right? We are connecting with strangers, right? We're looking to grow our network.
I wonder if we've lost her here.
Huh? No, I'm I'm here. Hello? I don't know, I think we might be losing Greg. Can you guys like maybe raise your hand if you can hear me? Hello? All right, okay, all right, you guys can hear me, okay, cool. I think it was you that was falling out there, Greg. Okay, so where was I? Oh, right, so coming back to uh, editing uh, your past posts, I would do it to an extent. If it's absolutely just full of all kinds of promotional posts that go way back, like don't make a labor out of it. But just get in the habit and start producing more um, you know, more of that positive value forward type content. And maybe just remove the photo promotions, because those are going to be more readily visible. Okay, let's see. Judith, you're welcome and thank you for being here. All right, so here's a question, is there somewhere I can go to get more training and understanding of the landing pages? I have one set up and a couple of people have tried to go to my website, have registered, given me their, that cutoff there. So in, there's actually is a couple of places uh, for landing page training. You have a setup on landing pages, like a quick video, right? In the help section, Greg?
Hmm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. I think there's like choosing a landing page, not necessarily building your own. Do we have one on the weekly work sessions? I was just looking at that, maybe drop a link if we've got one, the funnel session maybe.
Aspect, yeah, so as an aspect of a greater thing, there's landing page training, uh, definitely on the funnel training. That would, that's a weekly work session. Also, if you go into the help section of the get oiling back office, if you are at basic and above, you will see the ninety day challenge. And if you hit the table of contents, you'll see that landing pages is on several of those. And so you can pop into one of those videos and see some of that in depth. I know we released the custom pages feature um, during the ninety day challenge. And that was uh, what we did after uh, convention this past year. So that's, it's not that old, that information that's there. And so things haven't haven't really changed, actually. And there's uh, on the custom pages training, you'll see uh, uh, something really cool. And that's uh, that's actually breaking down how to use that as a landing page. Awesome, so Amy asks, will you, Coach Ashley, be leading the training? You may have already shared this, but I didn't catch it. Okay, so a couple of questions there from you. All right, so yes, I am leading this training. Uh, and this is full disclosure, you guys, I know that this this has been asked before. I think I've addressed it publicly here in weekly work work sessions. I have also talked about this in some of our other trainings. I am network marketing agnostic in terms of distributorship. So I am not currently a distributor for any company, period, and that keeps me neutral, um, that keeps trust, right? Because I still coach and work with leader organizations in other companies. This is my main squeeze, I love what we're doing with good oiling. I've always wanted to combine the power of software and systems to back up what I know to work in this industry for personal branding. For prospecting and for growing and scaling a business. And so I am not a Young Living distributor, I do have oils, I love oils, I love the lifestyle. I think this is really, this is really uniquely one of the most powerful companies in the industry. You guys have made a really great choice, but I am not a distributor of Young Living. All right. All right, uh, oh, they, that was the rest of your question, giving me their email info, just curious if there's more to it than that. To go back, Cass Alderman, um, for your landing pages, uh, there are campaigns that uh, that are already set up. First, they like prospects that you can choose to uh, to link up to your landing pages when you use them. You could also create your own and that is definitely in the funnel training. We do show you how to do that and what the strategy is overall. So you are capturing their information there, you could reach out to them immediately uh, if they've opted in. And you know, ask them what they liked about what they saw. But then you could also design specific campaigns that teach them things. All right, and there's lots of training on that and definitely, definitely check out the funnel training. All right, Greg has put some links here for you guys, the funnel in our chat.
The second link, uh, I think is the right one.
Okay, so for those of you who are watching this as a recording, just hop over to youtube dot com forward slash get oiling. Look in the weekly work session playlist for the funnel, the training is called the funnel and you'll learn about that. All right, Ashley asks clarification, so if someone reaches out online and wants to get started, what specifically? What specific way would you help them sign up? A phone call specifically if they aren't in your state? Yeah, absolutely, if they say I'm ready to get started, then you say, okay, let's set up a time uh, to sit down together. Can can you hop on the phone right now? And then you absolutely send them the link, but you have them on the phone, right? I don't know, maybe if if you're here right now, raise your hand. If you, if somebody said I'm ready to get started, you send them a link and they didn't sign up. See, yeah, this happened, so get on the phone and say, okay, now click this link. Okay, and here's what you're going to do next. Okay, and here's what you're going to do next, all right? So phone or Skype or whatever. And I have even in some cases, I have, I I have, I have actually pulled it up as a screen share. So like I, in my last business, I was enrolling people in Australia, for instance. I'm like, all right, so you're ready to get started. And there was some kind of confusion and I was like, okay, well, here, I'm going to screen share. And I'm going to fill out all of your information right now, what's your address? What's the credit card number? I'm putting it all there and for you and I'm hitting like, okay, you're in. Like do it for them if you need to, like sign on the dotted line. All right, great, I'm I'm so happy that you like it, Amy, and I look forward to seeing you in the training. All right, do you have a deadline for enrollment? Just signed up for good oiling yesterday, want to look around and make sure it's a good fit for me. So far, so fantastic, oh, love to hear that. All right, so in terms of this, oof, you know, we didn't establish that fully. And the thing is, we're going to start on May, excuse me, on May the third. So it's the first Thursday of May. We're three weeks away and we really don't need to have more than about thirty forty people in the group. And and it is filling up quickly, so what I would say is this, if it's feeling like a good fit for you. I would go ahead and and do it because you have that thirty day money back guarantee. If you decide, like you can secure your seat right now and we have a thirty day money back guarantee. So you decide next week, you know what, I I changed my mind, it's not for me, okay, that's fine. And 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 you'll be included there, right? And you'll be able to know that you've got your your seat secured. Awesome. Let's see. Oh, you're right, Jan. My my bad, you guys, I'm looking at a Friday, a line of Fridays on the calendar, it's May second. We're talking about Thursday evenings, not Friday evenings, we're not doing this on Friday evenings. That is May second, ninth, sixteenth and twenty third. Thank you for catching that. All right. Okay, Nicole asks, what about people who tag you in posts that then appear on your timeline? Should we, we be filtering what we allow to be tagged in? My husband is terrible for tagging you in every post he makes and I often feel like it skews my overall feel of my Facebook wall. You should be protective about your personal brand. You should be protective about your wall on Facebook, absolutely. You you get to choose what shows up there and it's, you know, it's nothing wrong with anybody that wants to include you in things. But you are cultivating um, in a sense, you know, your your online presence by choosing what appears on your wall. You, there are settings in Facebook where you can actually choose whether or not to automatically allow posts. Or automatically allow tags from others. So yeah, definitely, definitely be filtering that for sure. All right, Janet says, I spent way too much time last night looking for my YouTube URL. Do I need the YouTube URL to post videos on my website? Oh, um, so Janet, if you are, if you're creating YouTube videos. Then you're definitely going to want to have that link to the YouTube video that you've created, if you want to put that video into your website, for sure. Um, and the way that I like to find that is to go to studio dot youtube dot com. It's an easy, quick link to remember, studio dot youtube dot com. And if you are a YouTube creator, if you're making videos and uploading them to YouTube, then you'll see everything that you've made right there. Now, if there are other videos that you would want to share, so say like maybe one of Young Living's videos. Inside of a content funnel that maybe talks about seed to seal or peppermint oil or something like that. Then you can go to the share link underneath the YouTube video, grab that link and then put that onto one of your pages. All right. Any more questions before we go on our way? Remember, guys, you could go to get oiling dot com forward slash icon, I C O N. And you could learn more about the personal branding intensive, we certainly would love to have you there. So till then, um, anything else, Greg?
Yeah, Janet has one, one more question here. In what way should we promote our good oiling website? Is it okay to put it on my Facebook page on the left side or business card, et cetera?
Yes, 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 absolutely, um, yes, without a doubt. So um, there's a number of ways that you can do that and we've talked about that in some of our previous trainings. Depending on how you're branding yourself and what you want to put out there first. It could be that that you're sharing a landing page, a campaign landing page. So that maybe you're going to get, you know, sign up here to get my favorite five recipes for X Y Z, right? Like that can be a thing in your email signature, it could be on your on on your social media and it should be on your business cards, absolutely everywhere. And so if you have, you know, janett, your last name dot com and that links to your good oiling site, then you've you've got that covered. Yeah, absolutely, that's, those are some great ways to share. All right, that's answered, okay. Are we able to use good oiling training videos within our member area in a class format for our team leaders? Hmm, oh, that's an interesting question. So what I would say is, and actually, uh, Nicole will talk about that on uh, on the other webinar tonight. On specifically how we can put that to use. All right, Janet, um, all of the information on the class is going to be on uh, get oiling dot com forward slash icon. And and do feel free if you have, if you want to have, uh, you know, a little further chat with any specific questions, don't hesitate, reach out. Info at get oiling dot com and we'd be happy to answer you. And uh, just to recap for you guys, you can join the personal branding intensive, become an icon. When you join get oiling for your annual membership at basic and beyond. All right, super excited to have this training for you today and for all of your interaction. Thank you guys for sticking around and we will see you on next week's training.
Thanks, everyone, bye.